Broadcast has been set.
All right, thank you. Good evening, the time is now five thirty-two and I'd like to call the December twelfth, twenty twenty-two academic achievement meeting to order. I am Dr. Zippora Miller, Chair of the, of this committee and the District Five Representative for Prince George's County Board of Education. If everyone would please introduce themselves, starting with the board members who serve on this committee, any guest board members, Prince George's County Public Schools Administrative Staff, and then the Board Office Staff.
Uh, good evening, uh, Curtis Valentine, at-large member of Board of Education.
Good evening, Shayla Adam Stafford, representing District Four.
Good evening, everyone, Alvarez Ronreese, two-member of the Board of Education.
Good evening, Judy White, Chief Academic Officer.
Good evening, Kim McDaniel, Director of Curriculum and Instruction.
Good evening, Jamie Bowers, Director of Testing, Research and Evaluation.
Good evening, Anthony Whittington, Director of Monitoring and Accountability.
Good evening, Corey Carter, High School, Rila, Instructional Supervisor.
Good evening, Simone McCullogh, Elementary Reading Language Arts Supervisor.
Mrs. McKens Murray, will you turn your volume up?
Thank you.
Dr. Pabon, can you introduce yourself? Dr. Pabon, can you introduce yourself?
Sure. Hello, I'm Dr. Olga Pabon and I am the supervisor for the Reading English Language Arts Program for Grade Six through Eight.
Remember McKens Murray, can you introduce yourself and then the board staff?
Hey, hi, I'm Judy McKens Murray, pleased to join you tonight, thank you so much, a board member at large.
Annie's Ellis, Administrative Secretary, Board Office.
Good, I'm Newsome, Board Office Director.
Thank you so much for, uh, for being here this evening, Ms. Ellis, could you please call the role?
Yes, and just to let you know, Mr. David Murray, Board Member for District One, has joined also. Dr. Z Miller.
Present.
Mrs. Adam Stafford.
Present.
Mr. Serone Ruiz.
Here.
Mr. Valentine.
Present.
We have a call.
Thank you. May I have a motion to adopt the December twelfth, twenty twenty-two meeting agenda?
So moved, second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 The agenda is adopted. May I have a motion to approve the November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 The, the meeting minutes have been adopted for the November fourteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting. Um, I see that we do not have any public comment, so at this time, Dr. White, I will now yield the floor to you and your team and colleagues to present this evening's agenda items. The agenda items are as follows: Reading, the curriculum, learner experience, alignment to the county state assessments. Three point two, the core content pass rate for English, English Language Arts, ELA, and Social Studies by Race and Special Education, and three point three kindergarten, grades one and two literacy data.
Thank you so much. So I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. McDaniel, who will, uh, I think she said she's gonna drive the presentation while our three supervisors present. Um, when we finish that, we will go into, um, because I wanna come right behind uh, with her talking about around curriculum, we'll go over the DIBELS data that we have, and then we'll go into grades, if that's okay with the committee. Um, so we might wanna, in, because I want them to, to frame it. For those of you that were here last month, we're gonna run that first part the same way we did mathematics, so the presentation is kinda set up similar, um, as we did math. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. McDaniel to begin.
Thank you, Dr. White. Good evening, everyone. Um, we will be providing an overview of curriculum instruction and assessment in reading English Language Arts K to twelve. And so I will be sharing my screen and I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Simone Waage, who is our elementary, uh, supervisor for Reading Language Arts.
Thank you, Dr. McDaniel, and good evening, uh, board members.
I'm sorry, Simone, I think we have some, um, feedback with your audio.
I try adjusting it.
Is her camera on? If, I mean, you say your camera off and may, may help.
Can you hear me okay?
It's just staticky.
How about now? Can you hear me okay? Is that better? Not better.
Not really.
There's another problem. Um, is there anything you suggest?
Is that the device you're always on?
Yes.
Um, how la, how high is your volume? You have it all the way up?
Uh, midways.
Turn your volume all the way up?
What about now? Can you hear me okay?
It's louder. Is that the height, loud, the, um, loudest it'll go?
This is as loud as it will go. Can you hear me okay?
Oh, there you go.
That's, that's better.
Whatever you just did, there you go.
All right, excellent. Thank you. Um, I am Simone McCullogh, and I am going to start with our reading instruction continuum. So the reading instruction continuum depicts the sequence of instruction for grades K through twelve. Students at the elementary level vary developmentally and academically among the grade five span. To explain this progression in reading instruction among these grades, it's often referred to as learning to read and reading to learn. In kindergarten and first grade instruction, we are heavily focusing on students learning to read with an emphasis on the foundational skills. In grade two, students receive more of a balance between learning to read and reading to learn. We began shifting to focus more on comprehension to support how students read to construct knowledge and ideas. Then in grades three through five, we're more heavily focused on reading to learn with an emphasis on reading literature and informational text then. In grades six to twelve, six through twelve, the focus is interdisciplinary literacy. My colleagues will speak more to that later this afternoon. First, we're gonna start with how students learn to read. Now, when we talk about how students learn to read, we really, um, speak about the simple view of reading, also known for short as SBR, developed by Philip Goff and William Tomer in the nineteen eighties, they were mid-eighties. They identified two key areas of proficiency for literacy development, word recognition and language comprehension. The SBR states that reading comprehension is the product of printed word recognition and language comprehension. Word recognition is, um, referring to all the skills that students, um, for students to identify words through the decoding process and later automatically for fluent reading. A student's language comprehension represents their ability to understand spoken language. This is largely dependent on the student's breadth and depth of both vocabulary and background knowledge. When brought together, strong word recognition and language comprehension lead to proficient reading comprehension. When one is missing, a student will struggle. So let's talk about the shifts that we're making within our curriculum documents as we transition to the science of reading. The quiet of reading is a body of research from the neurosciences and cognitive science that provide insight into how our brain reads. Our de, our department, our office, is transitioning from a balanced literacy approach to a structured literacy approach in order to achieve great alignment to the science of reading. Based on the science of reading, students will learn to read through comprehensive, systematic, explicit and intensive instruction. When we talk about comprehensive, we wanna ensure that we are aligned to the Maryland College and Career Ready Standards and that our curriculum is paced, um, to include like to really strong materials on instruction over the course of the school year. And looking at our materials being systematic across all grade levels, the delivery of instruction is based on the spoken sequence that progresses from the simple to the complex. Newly introduced concepts are layered among our common previously learned concepts. In explicit instruction, the teacher gives direct and clear explanation for each new content, uh, each new concept. High explicit, um, instruction is provided not only in important foundational skills such as decoding and spelling, but also in higher level aspects of literacy, of literacy, sorry, such as syntax, reading comprehension and writing. When we look to the intensive level, we're talking about the use of multi-sensory strategies that involve visual, auditory, tactile and aesthetic senses in order to improve the memory in whole and small group instruction. Now, the simple view of reading and our curriculum components, we wanted to ensure as we were doing this work that we went back to that SBR model. The curriculum of components align to the simple view of reading in all of our grade levels. Word recognition includes the phonological awareness, phonics, letter formation and the use of decodable text, um, as well as the, that emphasis on, um, on shared reading. Language comprehension includes opportunities for students to build background content knowledge and vocabulary, also learn how sentences and paragraphs are constructed and identify and utilize text structure. As students become increasingly strategic and automatic about their word recognition and their language comprehension skills, they become fluent readers and writers as seen through independent application. So let's talk more about our curriculum instructional map. For short, we call it our CIM. Each part of the CIM allows for a different look at our curriculum. Teachers will use each part of the CIM at various points in time to provide clarity and to plan instruction. They will explore the parts of the CIM from a broad view of the curriculum to a more detailed view as you were seeing on your screen. These components are evident at each grade level. So the first part, when we're looking at the CIM components, we have what's called a time use. The time use shows the components of the curriculum and the expectations for each day of the cycle by topic. It also includes a year-long view, uh, that, that allows teachers to see all the selections that are being addressed for the year. The standards matrix gives teachers an opportunity to see which standards were taught or which standards are being taught for every quarter. Last but not least, we have a monitoring student progress section that explains all of our assessments available. This monitoring student progress section is also a part of, um, this also includes part of our pacing count. Looking on to our next section is our cycle or weekly banner. The cycle planner shows the cycle of instruction within seven days in detail with the alignment of standards as well as our textbook resources. Last but not least, putting it all together, we have our lesson seeds. The lesson seeds provide an overview or rationale, the standards, objectives, instructional support and a lesson sequence that includes the gradual release of responsibility. So as far as our core instructional materials, uh, two different companies were selected during our textbook adoption process in two thousand nineteen. Yes, two thousand nineteen, right in the midst of the pandemic. Benchmark Advance was selected for kindergarten first grade. And according to Ed Report's Benchmark Advance twenty-one materials in reading, writing, um, speaking, listening and language were targeted to support foundational skill development and are aligned to the standards for Gateway One. In Gateway Two, Benchmark Advance, um, had to do some updating and they updated their teacher's additions to provide enhanced instruction for vocabulary development and building content knowledge in order to meet that requirement. The two thousand twenty-two Benchmark Advance Teacher's Editions were supplied to all kindergarten first grade teachers this year with the reali, realignment in the CIM for the school year. HMH Into Reading was selected for grade two. In two thousand eighteen, we adopted HMH Into Reading for grades three through five. Therefore, those texts, those text materials are being utilized for students in grades two through five. To further support our teachers with explicit sequential foundational skills instruction in the science of reading, we're also using really great reading materials. Uh, Countdown for kindergarten, Blast for first grade and HE Words for second grade. Uh, to support our teachers in grades three through five, we're using Benchmark Education Phonics and Word Study uh, for those teachers. And that is a, a piece that is embedded in our curriculum. We have additional supports that we're also using. The additional support resources that you see listed here have been funded through Kerwin Blueprint and ESSR. Voyager Passport is in use as part of our after-school tutoring program. It is in its second year in sixty-six schools. Supplemental instruction is available with iReady and Lexia Core Five. Lexia Core Five is an online platform, uh, that we're using to support our students who were deemed at risk per the, um, per the screener. Voyager Passport and Lexia Core Five were rated as strong according to the evidence, um, the ESSA evidence standards. Data Blazer is our handwriting resource for manuscript and cursive writing. And for independent reading, students may access our digital Scholastic Literacy Pro um, or the Scholastic Materials and other books that are available to them in their classroom libraries. So we've talked a little bit about curriculum, we've talked about our instructional materials. Next, we'll talk about our Balanced Assessment System. This graphic here, the Balanced Assessment System, has been provided by MSDE. Now, we know assessment can't solely be from large-scale accountability assessments. In order to get an accurate picture of student achievement and performance, all of these pieces should be evident. This graphic shows a balance of formative and summative assessments with the arrow showing a combination of classroom-focused assessments more in large-scale school district or statewide assessments. While the large-scale assessments are useful to measure progress for the district statewide, for more classroom-focused assessments, for what can really inform our day-to-day instruction. So next, I wanna take a moment to share with you, um, what this looks like in our, uh, K-five instructional. So for interim benchmark, that's, um, assessments, or actually, I, I could say, just looking right across the top with the large-scale formative and summative assessments, you'll see our PGCPS quarterly benchmarks, our new screener Amplify in class with DIBELS for kindergarten through grade three, iReady and in cap. For our classroom-based formative and summative assessments, you will see DIBELS again because we're progress monitoring still within the DIBELS platform, selection quizzes for grade two, cycle assessments for grades three through five, analytic writing, and we're also using data from our platform with iReady and Lexia Core Five. Um, our, uh, teachers are also, um, getting more summative information through the items that they collect and create. For next year, um, the elementary reading language arts team is planning to add to this list by including project-based tasks. So let's take a look at a grade three sample from first quarter just so you can see our power standards are aligned from my CIM to our cycle assessment to our benchmark. As you can see on the screen, our reading foundational skills are highlighted in blue, three point three, and they're addressed through instructions, through phonics skills, reading lessons throughout the cycle. The writing, I highlighted in yellow, three point three, um, are assessed on the benchmark and they're included in instruction in multiple cycles in the quarter. There is at least one cycle assessment each quarter that assesses the same writing type, be it opinion, narrative or information. This allows for continual formative assessment. While teachers will continue to teach the CIM, as written, teachers will also adjust instruction to include scaffolds and support for students to reach the grade level standard. So let's take a look at a sample. We have a sample here for you to take a look at, um, captured using on, um, using standard, um, reading for literature, three point two, where students are having to determine the central message. And the first column is an example of that formative assessment item from our cycle assessment. And then you see that same type of question from the, uh, based on our standards and our grade three benchmark assessment. And then even more so, just looking at a sample from in path of the same type of question. On the bottom, you'll also see an example of the writing standard, three point three, which spoke about narrative. So you can see an example of what that looked like on our cycle assessment and an example of that narrative-type question on in cap. Last but not least, I wanted to talk a little bit about our professional development. Our professional development, it is on the, excuse me. We start out the year, um, with, uh, conversations around our updates and our curriculum maps um, for all of our stakeholders, for our teachers. Uh, we also provide, um, uh, provide, uh, resources for our leadership teams. Uh, throughout the year, we're providing ongoing professional development modules in the science of reading um, to our teachers as well as our reading leaders and administrators. And by monthly, there are elementary reading leadership meetings uh, where we are able to discuss curriculum assessment, coaching, um, and a professional book study. This year, we're reading The Writing Rope by Joan Sadida. Um, one of the things that we started, uh, the year, actually, the, um, the year of the pandemic in two thousand nineteen, we started our first cohorts of letters training. Uh, we have, um, at least now have at least six hundred teachers who have completed either volume one or volume two or, or volumes one and two of letters training. Um, we have, um, supported our teachers with letters training for early childhood, letters training for volumes one and two, and letters training for administrators. To further support our teachers through the process, we also have coaching sessions to support teachers as they are utilizing the strategies. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues to talk about literacy in the second, secondary level. Uh, Dr. Pabon will be presenting next.
Hello, everyone. Ooh, I have an echo. Oh, not anymore. Am I, can everybody hear me? Awesome. Okay, you can go to the next slide. So I just wanna thank my colleague for kind of giving the foundation of what happens with reading instruction in the elementary grades. And I'm going to move now to look at the middle grades and what happens there and talk a little bit about the science of reading in, for secondary students. So when we move into looking at the science of reading, we look at these four components. We're looking at how does reading comprehension develop and get deeper? What happens with independent reading? What happens with vocabulary? And then, of course, what happens with project-based and, um, application of standards? So under the reading comprehension section, you'll see that we go deeper into that reading comprehen, comprehension. As the text becomes more complex, then we need more strategies for helping students keep up with and, and make connections between the work that they're reading so that they can then use that reading to apply to a task that they may have to do later. It's also very discipline, interdisciplinary, so we have social studies and science topics on top of literature topics that you'll see in the literature that they read, um, and the text that they read in, in secondary. Um, and we start getting really deeper into looking at novels and looking at studying different authors. When we move to the independent reading, which is also a component of the science of reading and the importance of it, we allow actually in the, in our day, daily instruction, time for students to read in class. Um, we provide opportunities for students to choose what they wanna read, so that it'll increase their motivation to read. Uh, we have book clubs, um, also, which we, uh, we do author studies through book clubs. Sometimes the students just choose, sometimes they're thematic. And, um, all of our texts start from simple to more complex as we continue to build their reading comprehension skills and their critical thinking skills. Um, vocabulary changes in secondary, it's more morphology and that's the study of words. So you probably remember when you were in school and you did a lot of root words and base word, prefixes, suffixes. That's what we do in secondary, so we do a lot of that. We explicitly teach vocabulary, um, so that students understand how they work, especially that we, the English language has multiple meanings for many, many words. Um, so it's important that students understand how they're being used by the authors. And we also have to get into academic vocabulary so that they can begin to use that as they talk about what they are learning or reading. So they're using terms like plot and character and conflict, all of those, um, English terminologies, which is what would be considered our academic vocabulary. We begin to use that as they talk about what they're reading. And then we also wanna provide an opportunity for them to show how they apply these standards. And therefore, we have what we call culminating tasks, which kind of bring all the standards that are being taught in a quarter and students could create a TED Talk, a podcast. We have lots of different ID activities that they can show how they are using these standards and applying them to real-life scenarios. You can go to the next slide. And our curriculum is set up in the same, in a similar way to elementary. And our curriculum is set up in the same, in a similar way to elementary. So we have daily rest lesson plans that are systemic and are available for all language arts teachers in grade six to eight. Um, and the 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 lesson plans are looped into an arc, which is similar to a unit. So there's about ten lessons per unit and there's three arcs or units per quarter. Uh, they all have different focus areas and they all cover different standards to make sure that we're giving them the full. Gamut of the standards they need to know for grade six through eight. Um, the assessment that exists in our in our level is we have our reading inventory, which is our reading. Comprehension assessment, this is a great starting point for our teachers so that they know. Exactly what grade level the students are reading, so they know how to adjust and differentiate their instruction. Uh, we also have quarterly benchmarks, very similar to elementary. We take the MCAP in all three grades, six, seven and eight. And then we also have formative formative assessments that are embedded already in the curriculum. That help teachers check and monitor how students are learning those standards. Uh, we also have resources, we have my perspective, which is our main textbook. We also have another textbook that is a supplemental test textbook that is for our students that are in our honor courses. We have a variety of novels in both paper, hard copy, ebook and audio. So students have a variety of um, of choices and it also can meet the needs of their reading needs. We also have the program newsella, which is more focuses more on informational texts, very specifically the news. Um, and they also have different levels there for students. And we also have a digital library called Sora. And students can select books from our digital libraries to read and that promotes our independent reading. The interventions that you will find in secondary, um, grade six to eight is read one eighty and system forty four. Those um, and Lexia Power Up, both of those programs are usually taught through our reading, writing enrichment course. And we also have an after school tutoring program called Close Up from the Close Up Foundation. Um, which actually just it's going to end this this December. But it we we've been running it all of last year, all summer long, and then the beginning of this semester, this semester. And then we provide professional development for assistant principals and principals monthly. We also provide uh, monthly professional development for our reading English Language Arts leaders. We all, we also have evening, what we call planning clinics. Where teachers can actually come and how we help them plan for a quarter, for an art, for the semester. Um, and then we always provide uh, professional development over the summer through our summer institute. And our core materials, I mentioned before, but I wanted to talk about it in this lens. Is what we is Pearson's My Perspective. Um, we adopted this in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Um, this, this uh, this textbook. Has a variety of texts in there from informational texts to our literature, poetry. Um, it's very diverse, we have a a lot of diverse authors. And because of all the things, it also has a writing component that goes with it. And because of these pieces, it met expectations for the ed reports. We also have some supplemental materials for newsella, which I mentioned before. And we have novels that we continue to approve and increase. That will allow for a lot of variety and diversity for choice for our students. And I wanted to show a slide very similar to what Simone showed earlier. Um, in terms of what the assessment looks like. So we um, try very hard to make sure that the assessment that they uh, use formatively in the class. To the benchmark to finally on MCAP looks very, very similar. So as you can see, this is an example of a writing task that students might get. On MCAP and you can see the wording is very similar when it's in the curriculum. It's asking them to read two pieces of text and to write an essay that they compare. Um, the narrative, the narrator's um, explanation of the plot. Then we also have one that's very similar on the benchmark that's asking them also to develop. Information about the plot and the theme. And then there's an example that comes straight out of MCAP, which does the same thing where they read text. And they write an F, an essay and they're also developing, looking at how a theme is developed within a piece of text. So you can see that we try very hard to show how students go from the formative assessment, then there there there's. They take it on their benchmark, so we can monitor along the way before they actually take MCAP in April, May. Okay, and I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Courtney Corrie Carter. Sorry.
That's okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. And I'm gonna uh, try my best uh, not to be redundant. Because one of the most important things, and I think it is important thing to note is the continuum from um. You know, uh, Dr. Babon talked a little bit about the continuum from elementary from middle. From middle to high, it really is more of a uh, very similar structure in terms of. The expectation of the state standards and in terms of how we're structured to respond to them in terms of. The look of the curriculum in terms of the arcs, the culminating task, so those are built. Uh, very, very similar uh, with appropriate nuances uh, that are great appropriate. But the structure pretty much from six to twelve, um, students will find a very familiar feel um, in terms of the curriculum flow. And so I did want to point that out. Um, so um, in in high school, you know, one of the things I do want to point out is we weren't one of the first districts to uh. Participate in MSD's curriculum vetting, so. The basis of our response to ensure alignment was through that exercise where our our curriculum was vetted and and met. Approval and from there, um, as Dr. Pabon mentioned, we engage uh, teacher teams. Um, based on feedback from uh. Curriculum surveys that we send out at the end of each quarter. Uh, we send surveys to students in terms of reading materials. Uh, we look at information from visits to schools in the classrooms in terms of. Taking a look at the top curriculum and we use all of that information in addition to the data. To inform revisions every year and we engage teacher teams at each grade level. Um, to to be involved in those revisions, so that work continues every year, you know. Uh, gratefully, we're at a point now where we're doing some very nuanced tweaks. As those years come and we're grateful to be in a position where we can really do some targeted uh, revisions when they're necessary. Um, as Dr. Pabon mentioned, there are several lessons uh, throughout the curriculum. Um, and we do, um, as I mentioned, um. Uh, previously, we engage in a cycle of meeting with the department chairs, the teacher coordinators. Uh, visiting um, a collaboration meeting to provide support and then engaging in classroom visits. Where we provide generic, nonevaluated feedback to teachers on and departments on what we saw. Um, in the classroom and we also share that with the administration in terms of their follow up with um. With those teams, um, in terms of assessments, uh, for us, uh, we have the uh. Our students in the tenth grade take the achieve three thousand level set. Um, they get a lexile score that gives us some great information um, in terms of that assessment. Uh, we also, for us, we don't take um, MCAP in the ninth grade, but. We do have access to students' middle school scores to inform uh, ninth grade instruction. So that is still a very valuable resource for us at that grade level. Um, in terms of reducing the amount of testing if students have some valuable data coming out of eighth that really satisfies a lot of what. Could be utilized in ninth grade. Uh, we have quarterly benchmarks, uh, systemic benchmarks is um, is indicated that are aligned to the curriculum. Um, the MCAP assessment program and we have culminating tasks that are curriculum embedded. Uh, quarterly that really serve as a culminating activity for a given arc or unit. And also as a practice for the systemic benchmark because those assessments are aligned. And of course, we have curriculum embedded interim assessments that cover um, there's a brief reading comprehension assessment. Based on standards that were covered up to the midway point through a quarter and that's across um, grade levels as well. Uh, we also adopted in my perspectives uh, textbooks and then we also have novels. Uh, aligned with uh, our quarterly theme, so if you can imagine. You know, when you adopt a textbook, that sort of is one of the foundational pieces of framing. Some of the thematic flexibility you have and then we have, we're fortunate to get novels uh, and ebooks. To uh, complement those units, so we we purchase novels. Um, that are in the line with our goals to be culturally responsive and also that fit. And with those thematic units that are foundational in the text that we have. Um, as Dr. Babon mentioned, we're grateful to have newsella as a resource for informational text, um, a lot of. High school students struggle with uh, informational text. Um, and again, our digital library really uh, gives us an opportunity to uh, complement the curriculum and target. Reading materials in specific areas that need them, for example, uh, alternative schools needs a certain text that students. Um, in the general curriculum uh, using, but there may be another text better for them. So we're able to send some ebooks and target specific to those schools or to those classes, so. We're able to leverage ebooks in ways where we have some deficiencies in some areas. Um, and again, our language and composition AP books, that's another uh, conversation, language and literature comp. And we have the Bedford handbook um, as a language resource, um, standard resource, um, grammar. Uh, for eleven and twelve and then for nine and twin, we have Easy Writer, which is the resource that came along with our adoption. Our interventions are, we have a lab course, which is complementary to the core English course, those students would take English. On the second day as an elective course and they would in those courses utilize the interventions I have listed below. Achieve three thousand and no red ink. Um, some special education students are in read one eighty and system four forty four, and this is the second year. Of the Level Up Tutoring Program, which will be starting with students um, just after the new year. So after school program focused on providing some reading comprehension support. Um, and in terms of professional development, uh, we have monthly, I mean quarterly, grade level teacher trainings in the evenings. Um, for our teachers to, we review curriculum, we review updates. Discuss strategies and we always have one of them share a strategy uh, that's been working in the classroom. Uh, we also have monthly monthly meetings with the teacher coordinators. Uh, to build a teacher capacity in terms of them as being teacher leaders in the building. Um, as Dr. Babon mentioned, uh, we have a summer literacy institute and we were grateful this past year to have some authors from our curriculum. Uh, to participate, to provide some uh, tips and training to teachers. And we also offer some workshops on additional uh, special topics in the evenings. Um, again, this is the um, as um, as mentioned previously, my perspectives. Met Ed Reports um, expectations in terms of uh, core instructional materials. And here's Dr. Babon mentioned, as I wrap up, uh, we talk about this alignment. Essentially, in in high school, our standards are built in in divided under reading, writing, speaking and listening. And when it comes to reading, um, particularly, the text is divided between informational. And and literature, so we have literature standards and informational text standards. So over the course of a quarter, students is going to get experience with both because both are going to be on the assessment. But at the end of the um, assessment, students are only going to write one particular type of task. Um, and so this is just another example as uh, um, as uh, Ms. McQuade and Dr. Babon mentioned in terms of alignment. Um, our students in grade ten are practicing um, argument, writing arguments. Um, and so you can see across our uh, grade ten. Um, assessment from our curriculum on the far left. All the way through our benchmark assessment item, through the sample MCAP item. Students are focused on taking uh, what they have read and developing and gathering some evidence. And writing an argument. One thing I do want to point out is is that throughout the course of the year. So this is one quarter um, being represented and then the next quarter is going to be students writing, um, for example, an explanatory essay. And it's going to be some different type of text. But one of the things we have to do is prepare our students to be able to respond to any uh, after reading any type of text. To write any type of essay because that's the format of the new assessment is. Students have to be able to, no matter, they might read literature and be asked to write an argument, they might, they write, might read an argument. And be re, be asked to write a more narrative response, so. The main thing is to get into continued practice in all of these areas, which I know all of our curriculum have that as a focus. But primarily, we have as much alignment in terms of. With the type of practice that we've chosen to focus on in a given quarter and I will end on that note.
So we have two more presentations, one on devils and one on grades, but I wanted to stop here. To see if you want to ask any questions or if you want us to just keep going.
I want to make sure we're mindful of time because I know we have a hard stop at seven. So do you want to take questions and then maybe we can pause? Um, so to ensure we have enough time for the two other presentation on assessment and devils.
Sure.
Colleagues, does anybody have any questions? Okay, I see board member, uh, Sheila Adams Stafford. Um, you go first and then after that, I see board member Valentine, he'll go next.
All right. Hi, everyone. Good to see everybody again. Haven't been here, been out having a little baby here. So excuse me, uh, I missed our last meeting, uh, but I'm really excited about this presentation. And I wanted to thank everyone for uh, sharing the information with us today. Uh, and I was just so encouraged by all that I just saw, uh, specifically, I wanted to. Just shout out the um, use of the labs, uh, the the labs as an intervention for ELA. I feel like those are, you know, proven to be really successful, so it's it's great to see that that's happening. I just had a couple of quick questions, um, I wanted to ask specifically if. Um, you, I know, I noticed in the professional development that there are quarterly PDs and also monthly PDs. But I wanted to know if you all had considered using a. A weekly model that possibly did like a learn implement do where folks were asked to take what they're learning. For example, like with the science of reading in terms of literacy and apply it to content. Um, and I guess just asking if there are are any sort of content based professional development. That's happening alongside uh, this work. Uh, so that was the first question and then I also wanted to know if we could see some of the the RI data. Or um, some of the results from some of the interventions like read one eighty. Uh, I remember read one eighty so vividly, uh, and sort of how it it supports students. Uh, specifically, uh, and you know, moving towards being on grade level and so those were my two questions there and thanks again, it's great to see everyone again.
So just quickly and then supervisors can jump in. Um, while they might have mentioned the quarterly, I think they're trying to just kind of give like the overview of the PD. But know that we do weekly office hours, for one, that's for teachers to come in during their um, school day. So that they can ask questions right then and there, um, get feedback, work through ways of implementing like what's going on right in that moment. They also do monthly, like they're, actually, my team, if you look at the professional development, they're they're doing PD all the time and. While we have a professional development process in place in the system, where in reality, we think about quarter one, they have to before quarter one, say all the PD. We identify that when we implement something new, there's PD that we have to ask for as in the quote unquote emergency basis, meaning. She rolls out science for reading, all of a sudden we realize teachers are in letters training, teachers are stuck, we ask for it, like, we want a hard stop right now to do a PD next week. We want to bring the vendor back because we have questions about the curriculum. So many teachers have emailed or asked questions that we know we need a PD right now in the moment. So we try to be really real time with what we're getting from them and they, all three of them actually do surveys with their teachers. So they can constantly get feedback on the curriculum, um, feedback on where they need adjustments so that they can tailor professional development so for right there in the moment. I'll stop there and let any of them jump in and just either correct me because sometimes I say incorrect things because I'm not always right. But I believe I'm right in what I'm saying, but I'll give them a chance to confirm or deny.
Um, definitely, everything that Dr. White said, you were right. And then also, um, we also have team teacher leaders in our buildings. That are able to do some quick, some weekly professional development with teachers through collaborative planning. Some of them have um, instructional lead teachers that are able to go in and do demonstration lessons. Um, actually work one on one with teachers, so there, the weekly, a lot of the weekly professional development is happening in the school base. Um, and then we do more of the systemic training across the monthly. Um and then we do more of the systemic training across the monthly.
And I would, Olga brought up, Olga brought up a great point, I would just add, we talked about last month with mathematics. That uh they really talked about that coaching side-by-side. Remember though, that our coaches, our um ELSTs are all in classrooms because we need them in the classrooms right now. So we, we're just trying to make adjustments and do the best we can to still provide as much support as we can with a very limited staff. When I say that, you take elementary, she has a hundred, I'm gonna make this up, a hundred and six schools, I wanna say, might be a little more. Um right now, it's three members of her team in office supporting a hundred and six schools, but we're gonna make it happen. That's why we have office hours, that's why we're like, we're phoning into their collaborative planings. Um Olga has two of her, two of them for all the middle schools are currently in her office. Cory is the same, I think he has three, so, but we, we're still trying to make, make it happen. The other thing I would just say about interventions, um we have to, because we're buying some interventions from a systemic per- um perspective. Some of them, we have to respond back to MSDE um about where we are. So when that report is ready, I'll ensure that this committee gets that report, that'll kind of lay it out. I'll also jump over to the special education side and grab, cuz they do a lot with um Read uh One Eighty and System Forty Four as well for their students. So I'll try to grab that as soon as those reports are ready to bring them onto this side.
Really quick, I did want to add that um to your point about seeing, you know, the, the benefit of PD in practice. We do engage in lesson studies with schools and partner with them, working with groups of teachers to do some PD around a given particular lesson. Uh talk about it together, while have someone teach, have them model, have them watch, you know, come back and unpack that. So that type of thing also happens on a, uh, you know, depending on the school, when they're, you know, what their need is, we can deliver those targeted type of supports um when, when required.
Thank, thank you so much. Um I'll, I'll say, it may be interesting to explore um specifically how content-based PD, like specifically with ELA. Using some of these literacy strategies that you all are also combining at the secondary level, which is awesome. Uh looking at how a, a content-based PD cycle in which educators are really challenged to actually ex- not experiment. But use this in classrooms and then provide data and artifacts that they've done it. Um and then disaggregating that data, you know, at that granular classroom level and doing that in cycles. How that could possibly continue to move the needle forward? So um thank you, I'm just so encouraged by everything I've seen today. Thank you all so much for this great presentation.
And if I can add, for elementary, when we talk about direct application, one of the things that we put in place with letters. There is a bridge to practice piece where once you are participating in the webinar, you're also going back and applying. What you've learned and kind of doing a little bit of a case study on three students. And so we have a bridge to practice um Google Classroom where our, our participants are actually putting in their evidence of the kinds of things they're doing. To further support them, we have um coaching sessions with our science of reading consultant who kind of helps them in applying all of those aspects. Of what they've learned, questions they have around implementation within the classroom. We also have coaches that are part of some of the products that we've put forth. We have DIBELS coaches who, when um schools call and, and they need a, a hand or support and, or an understanding around what to do next. Those coaches are going right into schools virtually or face-to-face to support those teachers. As well as um our coaches with uh Lexia Core Five and really great reading. So although I don't have a team and, and we're, we're really small with the three, we have reached out to our vendors. To continue to provide the support across our district.
Thank you so much. I'm doing a time check, it's six twenty-six, so I know we have two more questions and then we'll go to the next presentation so we can allot um enough time for the last two. So board member Valentine, then board member Murray.
Thank you very much. Uh my, my question is uh, um just based off of one, one item you all mentioned. Um and it's related to um intervention, and I think someone also men- mentioned enrichment. Um and the way we frame, at least it comes off to me, is that there are certain students who are assigned to interventions, but it's not a universal practice. And so my question is sort of based on where we are post-COVID and where I imagine most students are based on what they've lost. Um what is the thought process around making those interventions and enrichments universal? Uh and if so, what would it take for us to do that?
Um any of the three wanna jump in before I, y'all know, I always have a statement, so.
Oh yeah, what, what I was gonna say, I know with uh, one of the things is, like, for example, the lab intervention is driven by the school schedule. And whether or not they chose to use that lab as a, a, an approach to address the particular students in their buildings. And we always encourage um, you know, schools to look at the data to determine, you know, if they have data on incoming students to look at how to have that conversation. And I'm sure they probably look at some of it, but we do know, like, for example, for the lab course out of all of the high schools, we have about eight schools that use it. Um to, to provide for their students. So I guess one of my responses would be, it's a school, it's a larger conversation with schools in terms of how they choose to leverage that course to support it. Students.
Yeah, what I, what I would just say overall, just because I know we have to move, is that you bring up a really good point. We try to utilize data, but we also try to keep things in tiers. So you think about tier one, tier two, tier three intervention, we try to build as much as we can into that tier one, everybody gets it. So we have made allowances in the curriculum to jump, dr- drop back, look at data and fix our documents, fix what we provide to them. So that we can grab as many kids as possible around things that we know we just aren't doing well, right? And so that means taking some stuff out that we think hasn't made it, adding new things in that we think can. Then we know that there're gonna be some kids who need a little bit more than that, and so that's when you jump into tier two. It becomes relevant because when we write for grants, when we talk about a universal screener by law and different things, you have to have a tiered process. So everybody can't get my most stringent thing because I have to save that for the kid who's so significantly behind. And I have to show that I did this core that everybody got, I might have touched them a different way, but I'm gonna take it even this much further for that student. And for that reason alone, uh we have to try to make sure that we build as much as we can, but there are certain pieces that will always remain at that tier three level.
So just, just to, just to confirm, um this is what uh Brother Carter mentioned, there are principals who have sort of the autonomy to choose whether, how, how they use those labs.
So for his, if, Cory, you talking about like your English nine, English ten?
Yeah, talking about that, yeah, the lab course, yes.
Yeah, so there are certain pieces in his lab that he wants to run a certain way because he's used data to say that the kids that are in that lab should have a double portion, right? So we're trying to really work with schools like, oh, your schedule's free, you need one more class, we're gonna put you in lab. That's not the child that necessarily needs to be in lab, we want the child sitting in lab who needs that extra dose. Now, there are times where teachers have autonomy because a part of that ro- should be a rotation where students get the chance to be right in front of that teacher, getting what they need. But then there're gonna be very prescriptive ways by which other times when they're not in front of the teacher and they're rotating like centers, like we were calling it elementary. That they should be on certain interventions that he's put in place specifically. Um and that, that rotates students through where they are individually um for that, so it's, it's a combination of both.
Okay, thank you.
Board member Murray.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Um I'll be quick, so I wanna keep us on time as well. Uh my first question was about Read One Eighty, functionally, what does that look like? Um who, who teaches it? Like, I'm reading online, it's like a forty-five to ninety-minute intervention, so who implements it? Like, when and where? Cuz like, that's a long block for an intervention.
I could talk about it in terms of um, um middle and core, if you wanna add for um how it's in nice school. So it is a, it's a blended course, so it, there, of course, there, it's taught during my reading and writing enrichment course. Which is, depending on the school, runs either forty-five to sixty minutes. Um students get it every other day because there, it's, it's delivered through their creative arts. And um there is a teacher that's assigned for that class. And they, um they usually divide the students into two, two groups. One group is online and actually doing the online component of the program, which is very specific to their needs. Cuz they're assessed early on, so if they need help with something very specific, the actual program develops a pathway for them. So that they, when they get online, they get to practice that. And then the teacher has the other half of the students teaching lessons that the program has identified were weaknesses for all the students. And that continued, they continue that pattern all the way through. Um and then it also has components where they have um eBooks and independent books that kids could read as well. So that we can continue building that independent reading. Um Cory, do you wanna add anything to, to that piece?
Yeah, I, but I will say, at this point in high school, it's pretty much a special education-driven um intervention. Um right now, we had some of it when we had a grant that's now um, you know, no longer in effect. But most of it's driven by special education and they use that three-step rotation and assess the students along the way. And by the end of the year, if they have enough practice with it, they're expected to grow one to two years in comprehension.
Okay, thank you both for that. Um and my second um question, and take first grade, for example, if I'm a struggling first grade reader. What is the um like tier two or three, like teacher has tried, what is the tier two or three intervention that comes next? I didn't um tease that out from the slides that I saw today.
If you're a first grade student, um a combination of things are taking place. One, um with the progress monitoring piece, there are lessons provided in the DIBELS platform. That the teacher would be able to utilize to meet their needs. Uh if that student was a student that scored well below benchmark, uh that student would be progress monitored every ten days or bi-weekly. So during that period, the teacher would go ahead and choose one of those um assessment measures. And then be able to continue to monitor instruction accordingly. At a school level, the reading leader or a um, a paraprofessional, some, I, I shouldn't say paraprofessional. A person set aside to be the intervention support in the building may also be able to pull the student for Voyager passport. Although we're using it as a tutoring program, there are students that are receiving um instruction on Voyager port passport during the school day.
Great, thank you all so much.
You're welcome. And um when we go to the next presentations, Jamie Bowers, I'm in Anthony Whittington are here to represent our Department of um accountability. They're gonna roll through, I'm gonna have them roll through growth presentations, so that way we get through the presentation. So write down your questions, cuz I know you're gonna have something, then we can answer on the back end. And board member Murray, um what I would say, just for everybody, because we talked about it last month, is that we do have tutor meeting. This is just a plug on how you all can help us with your constituents. We do have TutorMe, which is a twenty-four-seven um platform where students can receive instruction in multiple languages. So that helps our emerging schools as well, but for any content. And we really try to push that like on asynchronous days or just other days for parents to know, like, and we track, like, what grades are getting the most traction, what courses are getting the most traction. Students can go on twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. That is one of the things that we will continue to try to purchase through next year because we realize that many kids are actually utilizing it. But I just wanted you to have that information. So Jamie, I'm gonna call you up and have you share your screen and go through both presentations for us, and then we'll take questions.
All right, can everybody see my presentation?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna share with you, the first presentation is going to be for our beginning-of-year um data review for our DIBELS assessment. And the first thing I wanna just um build a little bit of background, so this is not the first time Prince George's County has utilized DIBELS. Uh we've used it uh a few years ago, and we are returning to this uh screening assessment. It's used by about sixteen other local education agencies across Maryland. Um this is a um, our, the, the Ready to Read Act or Senate Bill Seven Thirty-Four. This is the assessment that we are utilizing to screen students, um to deem students who are identified at risk for reading difficulty. Um so I'm going to share a little bit about how we utilize this assessment and when. So our first um slide is gonna show you when we're using this assessment to administer to students. And so like um Ms. McQuade told us earlier, our students in kindergarten, first, second, and third grade are all taking the DIBELS assessment. They are all taking it during the beginning of year, middle of year, and end of year. And if you look at the column with the DIBELS assessment window, you can see the different timeframes throughout the beginning, middle, and end of year that the students take the assessment. You can also see across the top, the five different subtests that students are taking. And you'll see the check mark um in each of the grade level columns as to when that grade level is taking each subtest. And I just wanna point you out that not each grade level is not taking all five subtests. So you'll see that the only grade level that does would be grade one. So just some participation data, so all the data that you're gonna see this evening is represented from our beginning-of-year assessment for DIBELS. And all of this data was as of November thirteenth, that was the date that we ended and cleaned up and validated all of our DIBELS data in our office. So the overall completion rate for our DIBELS assessment was ninety-seven percent across all of our four grade levels that are taking the assessment for the beginning of the year. So we had a total of thirty-six thousand five hundred and ninety-one students that completed a beginning-of-year DIBELS assessment. We had thirty-four schools with a hundred percent completion rate and a hundred and eight of our schools with a ninety-seven or higher participation rate. So that's a great uh participation rate um to ensure that we are including um a majority, if not, um close to all of our students in this beginning-of-year assessment. Uh we also administer the RAN as part of, and I'll talk about that on the next slide. Uh we have a ninety-two percent uh completion or participation rate for that particular subtest. And then we also administer as part of the amplifier DIBELS suite, the Lectura, which is the DIBELS Spanish version of the DIBELS assessment. And so uh within our immersion schools is where this Lectura uh version of the assessment is being administered. And we had an overall completion rate of seventy-three percent, um and that's administered to eight hundred and eighteen students. So this glossary slide is very important to look at all of the different acronyms that DIBELS uses within their um platform and within reporting out of the data. So you see on the left in orange are all of the acronym um initials. And then next to that is the um terminology or a, a short definition of what each of those acronyms are. So we have phoneme segmentation fluency, our nonsense word fluency, our correct letter sounds, a word read's cor- our words read correctly. Word reading fluency, our oral reading fluency, the maze, and the composite score. So getting into our actual assessment data, so first of all, we're looking at the beginning-of-year DIBELS data for all four of our grade levels. Um just to build a little background, these red, yellow, green, and blue uh bar graphs are all comprised of the composite score. Which is the makeup of all of the subtests that are administered within a grade. So essentially, it takes all of those uh subtests and kind of combines them together. Um some of them are weighted differently, but this band is representative of the composite score um for each student at each grade level. So you can see what we have on the left is by grade level, we have the N count or number of students that participated in each grade level. Uh within the red, yellow, and green and blue bars, we have uh the percentage of students that were at the well below benchmark. The percentage of students at the below benchmark in yellow, the percentage of students at benchmark. And then the percentage of students in the blue who were above benchmark. And then next to those percentages, we also included the N count or number of students that were represented within each of these um composites for um bars. So some things to point out, um if you look across each grade level, about thirty-five percent of all of our students are on track. Um at each of our grade levels for reading. Um and we wanted to tease out this yellow band specifically because those are our kids who are below benchmark, but almost to the benchmark. And so when we look at those, as part of that yellow band or below, we analyze the students within that band that were six composite points or less away from being identified at benchmark. Which would have been this green section. Based on our analysis, the following number of students and percentage of students by grade level were six composite points or less away from being identified at benchmark. And just to point out quickly, if you look at our kindergarten, uh we have number of test takers total. Then we have number of testers who were six composite points or less away, and then we have the percentage. And so I really wanna point out, um some really positive news is more than half of our first. And then we have the percentage. And so I really wanna point out um some really positive news is more than half of our first. And second grade students who were at the below benchmark for our beginning of year Dibbles. Are six composite points or less away from being at benchmark. So that's, that's definitely positive news um that we're looking at. When you look at a breakdown of our students who are on track, these bars represent students who would have achieved the. At or above benchmark or would have been the yellow and the green uh bands that you saw on the prior slide. So we're looking at across the bottom, the different subtests. And the light green represents kindergarten, the medium is first grade, the darker green is second grade. And the gray are third grade students. And so you can see across here. The different um variation of our students um in each of the grade levels and how they are performing at each of these subtests. So a couple of things I want to point out, um our second graders are doing a really great job at um word reading fluency. Um, you can see more than half of those second graders uh did well um who are at above benchmark. Um, you can see that a lot of our students within oral reading fluency are almost to the fifty percent mark, which means more, almost half. Of those students in first, second, and third grade are doing well with their oral reading fluency. We also wanted to show you the data from our Lectura Dibbles. And so remember, we're looking at about eight hundred and eighteen students that take, that took this assessment for our beginning of year in our immersion schools. And so we're seeing um a little bit different of a trend where a majority of our kindergarteners. Um, two hundred and thirty-three of those were at or above the benchmark. So it's very positive um news. And if you look at our first, second, and third grade, if you look at the combined percentages. Of those three grade levels, we're looking at about half or a little bit more than half of those students in those immersion schools. Who uh participated in the Lectura Dibbles and were performing at or above benchmark on that beginning of year assessment. And you can see the breakdown of those same subtests or subscores um for our Lectura version of Dibbles for those students as well. So one last slide, we wanna look at a national comparison because Dibbles is a nationally normed assessment. It's used in states other than Maryland. And so when you look at how our students are comparing to the national norm, if you look at the um note at the bottom. Where this current school year um per grade user uh base ranges from three hundred and fifty thousand students. To five hundred thousand students um assessed and that, that's nationally. And so when you look at the breakdown between our district, which is in the column on the left and each of these four grade level bands. Uh, and then the national on the right, you can look at the comparison to how our students are doing. At each grade level as compared to students who are in the, in the nation who are taking this assessment. So if you look at kindergarten, um our percentages are, are pretty close. And the number of kindergarteners who are identified at well below benchmark level. Um, and then if you look at grade one, grade two, grade three, there's a little bit more of a disparity between the number of students in Prince George's County. And the number of students across the nation that are identified at that well below benchmark. And that just means that there's a wider distribution of these students across the nation that are either in our below. Um, are at benchmark or are above benchmark level. So I'm gonna stop um talking for a minute. I know that you probably have some questions. Um, and I'm gonna have um Simone come on as well.
So Jamie, I wanna go through the other presentation first.
Okay. Do that. Alright, so we'll switch gears really quickly to our English Language Arts and Social Studies grade distribution. So um for the last academic achievement committee, we presented math and science um grade distributions. And we're using a similar formula for how we presented that information. Uh, and we've put together this comprehensive. Uh, slide presentation for you of the distribution of grade levels and we selected four transitional grade levels. Um, the bar graphs are going to show you a subset of those identified grade levels. Um, and we've identified the four grade levels for the fathering reasons. So we selected grade five because those are our students who are transitioning from an elementary to a middle school. We selected eighth grade because those students are transitioning from a middle to a high school. We selected ninth grade students because currently uh the state as well as Prince George's County is monitoring all ninth grade students for being on track. As in passing for core contents in a world language course. Um, as well as ninth grade promotion for being on track for graduation. And then our final grade level we so uh selected is tenth grade and we selected that grade because those students. Are taking um assessments that are putting them on track for being college and career ready. And so at the end of tenth grade, tenth graders are uh given a designation if they are or are not on track for college and career readiness. Um, as well as they are taking graduation assessed um tests in reading, science, and high school government. So the slides represent the English Language Arts and Social Studies final letter grades um as distributed um on students' report cards. Um, as well as the number of enrolled students at the end of each school year. Um, the data is displayed in three different bar graph trends, so we're showing um a pre, a during, and a kind of poster kind of still in um COVID pandemic. And um, we wanted to show you that trend over three years to kind of show you. How the, how the data has kind of distributed itself over the three years. So I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Mr. Whittington, to share the information on the graphs.
Good evening, board members. Um, keep in mind, the Dibbles data is representing. The beginning of this school year assessment and the data that we're looking at now is over a three-year trend. School year twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two, if you can look on the left-hand side of the graph. Um, this is representing grade five, reading English Language Arts, and the N is the number of students. That are in that particular grade level. So for example, school year twenty twenty, there were. Ten thousand three hundred and sixty-five students in the fifth grade that represents this grade distribution. Um, for the grade reading English Language Arts. Um, so for sake of time, I'll just uh run through this as quickly as possible. I'm gonna uh focus on. The failure rate within each of the grade levels. So for reading Language Arts, as you see in SY twenty, two percent of the students failed. Reading Language Arts and in SY twenty-one, which is the height of COVID, thirteen percent of the students. Um, actually failed reading Language Arts. But then as we brought the students back into the building, which we call brick and mortar, bringing them back. Three percent. So we're bringing our trend right back to where we left off in SY twenty for reading Language Arts, which is encouraging. If we go to the next slide for grade five, social studies. We see some of the similar patterns that we saw in reading Language Arts. Tim, if you can move to the next slide. In social studies, as you see, I just mentioned uh in SY twenty for reading Language Arts, there was a two percent. Failure rate, right now we have a one percent for SY twenty, and then in SY twenty-one, there's a twelve percent failure rate. And that has moved now back to two percent for SY twenty-two in social studies. So that is encouraging. Grade five, they exit, they go off to middle school, and now we're gonna look at grade eight, reading Language Arts. In grade eight, reading Language Arts, four percent of the students in school year twenty. Um, had a failing grade and twenty-two percent. For SY twenty-one had a failing uh grade for English Language Arts. And then last school year, ten percent or one out of ten of the students actually failed. Eighth grade reading Language Arts. And in social studies, still similar results. Um, it's important to have a good core in reading comprehension. In order to do well in social studies and it seems, and then we see a mirroring result with five percent in SY twenty. And twenty-one percent in SY twenty-one and then SY twenty-two, nine percent of the students failing. Which brings us to ninth grade and Jamie alluded to this being a very important grade. Because ninth grade is where students start bearing credits. Therefore, they need to pass English nine in order to move their classification from freshman to sophomore. So you notice the failure rate is much larger here in high school when we start bearing credits than there was. In the eighth grade and the fifth grade. In SY twenty, we had eighteen percent of the students failing English nine. And then in the height of COVID, there were thirty-seven percent of the students. Failing English and if we add the students that received a D. That would bring us up to fifty-one percent or a little over half of the students that failed in the height of COVID. But once we brought them back to the building again in SY twenty-two. We see that we had a, a decrease in the number of failures and our school teams are working diligently to continue to bring that number down. You notice the N count is increasing for ninth grade because what I said earlier, if you fail. English, you can't change your classification, you're repeating the grade. Therefore, there's more students sitting in ninth grade in that next year because of the failing grade in English. If we move over to grade nine, social studies. We're gonna see some of the similar data with nineteen percent failing in school year twenty. Thirty-eight percent failing in school year twenty-one and twenty-eight percent failing in school year. Twenty-two, mirroring some of those similar results that we witnessed in English Language Arts. And last but not least, if we look at tenth grade, tenth grade being. A year where college and career readiness comes into play in the number of assessments that the students take that they need. To meet towards graduation criteria. In English Language Arts, we see a twelve percent failure rate in SY twenty and then SY twenty-one, again in the height of COVID. All of the students were uh being educated at home, we had twenty-nine percent that were uh failed the end of the course. And then in SY twenty-two, twenty percent failure rate. And lastly, but not least, we'll look at social studies, which you're still seeing some of the same results that we're seeing for English Language Arts. For grade ten as well with fifteen percent in SY twenty failure. SY twenty-one at thirty-one percent failure rate and then back to twenty percent for SY twenty-two or the end of last year.
So we also wanted you to look at the grade distribution for all of our grade levels uh between, from second grade to, to grade twelve, not just the four that we showed you in the graphs. So in the presentation, we have a link to a disaggregated data addendum, which will show you for each grade level. Uh, in reading and social studies, the percentage and number of students who are earning each of the five letter grades. Notice that pre-kindergarten, grade one um are not included and those students in those grades. Have a um different scale um of grades, so pre-kindergarten have uh different levels. That identify their performance in pre-kindergarten uh and kindergarten and first grade also have a different scale to note. Their performance in those two grade levels. So those two grade levels are not included in this disaggregated data addendum. Those are all of our slides.
Jamie, can you open the link up for the slide previous so they can see it? And I know we're out of time, Dr. White, who appreciates the time. We appreciate the time, we just wanted you to see what they have access to, and this is every single grade level. Broken down by Student Service Group.
And we like showing grades just because a lot of times, depending on teachers are all moving at different pace, what we know is constant is teachers, students are getting instructed. We talked about this last month with math, they're getting instructed every day, they're in content every day, they're doing assignments, project-based. Activities, just different things every day and they're graded on those things. So you could see one thing that looks one way, but you look at their grades, but their grades are gonna always be what's right now in the moment. So that's why we wanted to make sure that we did the same for reading and social studies. With that, I did tell the board, we can go over about, about five minutes, um no later than seven, ten, because I, I know, I know y'all have some burning questions. And wanna give you all the chance to, to ask some of the questions you may have so that we can um provide with some clarity or answers. So Board Member, Board Chair, well, of this committee, Miller, I turn it back over to you.
Hey colleagues, do you have any questions at this time? Okay, Board Member Stafford, uh Adam Stafford and Board Member Valentine. Maybe if we can keep it and then Board Member Murray, if we can keep it to one question so we can get through your questions.
I was just, I was just gonna say because we have a short time period, can I just email? In my specific questions and then we can receive like a response back in writing because I, I just know that the conversation would go a little bit longer than, yeah.
Um, I was gonna ask particularly during COVID, we did institute, and it seemed like it may have started during COVID, but if it had started before, I didn't know. Uh, the ability for students to, to retake ex uh and to redo um assignments. Um, how has that impacted the uh the grades? And secondly, how are we ensuring that grades are reflective of, of competency and proficiency um in a particular uh subject? Uh, where you're seeing students maybe getting a B or an A, but um not doing very well on actual standardized assessments.
So I'll take a stab, Anthony, you can jump in on this and then I'll turn it over to my content team. Um. Yes, in our administrative procedure, we still have uh students have an opportunity, there's language in there about. Um, having an opportunity to redo assignments, you know, our goal should always be to move kids towards mastery. So, but students or parents have to request that from their teacher. They get a one chance opportunity to make up anything that's not designated as an assignment that they could not do it. So that is still there. Um, your second question was about, what was your second part of that question?
It was about grades versus proficiency, um and that is not as, not as, I don't use the word grade inflation, but the sense that. Children who are getting all A's, but then when they take a test to assess their ability to do. Um, complete a task, they don't do very well.
So what, one of the things that um they actually have assignments on, um, the team mentioned. Couple of things, the team mentioned, um, they do rubrics, which we, a lot of their assessment assignments are, are based on rubrics. Um, based on MSD, there are portions of the test that they will take this based on rubrics. You have some children. Teachers are off on pace and they don't even get to all the content before they have to take an interim assessment. The other thing I was just saying that I'll let my team jump in, when you look at the interim assessments, it's nine to twelve questions on an assessment. Versus you look at instruction in a class, they're putting two grades per week. Um, it could be a project, we want students to be able to give back to us in multiple ways. So sometimes you might ask the student a quiz, sometimes I'm having a discussion, sometimes they're working in a group, sometimes it's a project. Versus when you look at those high-stake tests, it's always gonna be um built around a certain way, but on those intervals, it's only like nine to twelve questions. That's why we say you can't take an interim and, and take in a whole grade level of students that say they're not performing. Which is why grades come in because it's what we give every single day in, in the assignments that we give back. With that, I'll let the team jump in, you all know and you, you, you talk to teachers, I know in professional development about grading, so I'll let you guys jump in and add anything else to that question.
I was just gonna say that teachers have autonomy in, when it comes to the grading, they have to follow the policy, but they, they set up their own um. Um, structures for what I, what pieces they're going to grade, how are they grading them? Um, we, we provide recommendations in our curriculum um of how it should do so that it can be more. Um, systemic across the board, but it is, um, it is an area that is left toward the teachers to um to implement.
The only other thing I would just add is that you, you heard the team mention how they had cycle assessments, that's, I'm gonna use one as an example, a cycle assessment. Then that cycle assessment would lend to the interim assessment, that interim assessment would lead to MCAP. Our cycle assessments are, um, what are the other names y'all have for them? They're not mandatory. So students, teachers that give them, their students are getting exactly what it's gonna look like and then they're gonna get it again, exactly what it looks like, then they're And then they're gonna get it again, exactly what it looks like, then they're gonna get it again. But you could have a teacher that just stays in curriculum. They make up their own things. They don't use the ones that we've created because they're not mandatory. We put them there because we want them to have every opportunity to see what it looks like before they get there. So I just wanted to note, make a note of that, that those are not mandatory. And on, on the slides, if you go back for each of the grades, you'll see all the ones where they put, the ones that they built in automatically into their curriculums. Those are not mandatory. They're part of the curriculum.
No, thank you. And I, I think just nationally with the movement away from the SAT and ACT, that, that's common, but at the same time, those are required for, for scholarships. So just wanna leave that there. Thank you.
Board member Murray?
Thank you, Dr. Miller. My first question, either for, for Dr. White or Ms. Bowers, when will the, the winter mid-year administration of DIBELS be?
It's January the eighteenth to February the eighth.
Okay. Thank you. My first request would be that this board gets this information much, much sooner. This data, I presume, is probably from September. In my opinion, it shouldn't take that long for this data to be turned around. It's pretty much instantaneously available. Very familiar with this system in DC. And so the data we're looking at is already pretty outdated. For this committee, I would hope that we'll reconvene. I would suggest that we do really soon to talk about this. I mean, we just looked at data that showed that sixty-five percent in and around there of our K to three students are not reading on grade level. That's jarring data. That's sobering data. I don't feel great just logging off tonight and saying this is where we're at. We're doing some things. I would really urge this board to come back and work with the administration to work out a plan for the rest of this school year. And I'd encourage the administration to continue to share with us. You said we're progress monitoring kids every ten days, every two weeks that are extremely below grade level to be sharing out that data with the board every two weeks when you get it as well. Thank you.
Jamie, what's the window for DIBELS, the first administration?
It was September the twenty-sixth to October the nineteenth.
Okay.
But then it takes a few days and or weeks, depending on the schedule, to validate all of the data and ensure it's all, we've gotten, you know, all of our test takers, remove duplicates, validated, you know, all of our test takers and things like that. So. But the end was October the nineteenth.
And so teachers, from that perspective, a teacher may have it quicker. When we pull in it for system-wide to share for purposes like this, we have to make sure it's validated before we bring it. So we weren't just holding on to it in September and not wanting to share. They don't even finish the window until October. I just wanted you to know when the window was.
Don't see any, any more questions for now. And the goal of today was to go understand the curriculum K through twelve, English Reading Language Arts. And we added, and I may have been more aggressive in trying to add two data sets at one time to go over the data, but it was very helpful to see the data. And we will note your comments, board member Murray, to work with the team to see when we can reconvene because I know we're trying to get through a lot of data sets today. And I may have been a little ambitious by trying to add two data sets. So thank you, team, for fitting, fitting it in. With that said, I will move on to the next, follow-up and next steps. Follow-up items from October seventeenth and November fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Our committee meetings are posted on their respective dates. Then I'd like to thank everybody, the public, the, my colleagues, Dr. White, your team, and your colleagues, board office staff for joining us tonight. Thank you so much for the information that you shared with us. And we will be looking forward to future collaboration on it. And I want to thank everybody for a great meeting, and may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I move to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you so much. This meeting is adjourned at seven oh seven PM. Thank you all, and have a great night.
Hi, Dr. White, I'm gonna send you something or send Dr., send it to Dr. Goldson about a framework for implement MA, and then maybe I can follow up with you on it.
Okay, yeah, definitely. Yeah, that's fine.
I'll send it to Dr. Goldson.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Have a great holiday, everyone.
Thank you.
Hey, Dr. Miller.